Hi, everybody. Call to our meeting at seven eleven P M. We could have an executive session prior to this.
You just got personnel and potential litigation.
Yeah, all right, and we'll do roll call. President Valerie Reifaller.
Here.
Vice President Diane Law.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley Glad Fuller.
Here.
Councilmember Brooke Shet Williams.
Here.
That's fifty times here. Councilmember Andrea De Sello.
Here.
Councilmember Jay Dorn.
Here.
And Mayor Paul Gammara.
Here.
Okay, then we'll stand for the potential leaders if you can. All right, this is the time to comment, public comment. For Churchill for our residents and taxpayers, you have up to three minutes. Please raise your hand. I don't have anybody in the room right now. So if you're online, please raise your hand and you will be promoted to speak and you have three minutes. Please state your name and your address. When it's your turn. Thank you. Nobody has raised their hand yet, so we're just gonna give a minute. Give people some time. So now we do have fourteen attendees online right now as an F Y out of everybody. All right, I don't see any hands, so we will close public comment. Moving on.
Madam President, motion to accept the meeting minutes from the Monday, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three Borough. Borough Churchill Council workshop meeting and the Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three Borough Council regular meeting.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right. That's it.
Any discussion?
Of waiting, anybody? No. No discussion, all right. We'll move on to the next item. All in favor? Oh my gosh, it's not workshop. All in favor? Opposed? Nobody. Motion carries without any opposition. Moving on to the next one. Here's Mayor.
Madam President, if I may.
Yes, please.
Chief Ron Rackley have reported to me that there was one significant incident during the month of December twenty twenty-three. The details will follow. Our officers handled a total of six, seven hundred and sixty-two events. One hundred and one thousand, six hundred and seventeen for the year, consisting of both calls for service and proactive patrol engagement and detail. Resulting in seven arrests. The total number arrests for the, for the year is eighty-seven. The department's five police vehicles logged a total of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one miles. The combined year-to-date total is fifty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-three miles. Chief Ron Rackley has reported that the total amount of magisterial clients collected for the month of December twenty-three was six hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. Total for the year twenty twenty-three, nine thousand, eighty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. The ticket summary for the month of December twenty-three was twenty-eight, zero non-traffic, six parking and twenty-two traffic tickets. On December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at approximately one forty-five A M, our officers responded to the twenty-two hundred block Hollywood Drive to assist Wilkinsburg Police with a disturbance in the street involving a male occupying a silver S U V making threats. When the officers arrived, they observed a vehicle matching the description attempting to leave the scene and a traffic stop was conducted. The vehicle initially stopped for officers, but then fled and engaged officers in a pursuit which was terminated shortly after. Later that same day, at approximately eleven forty-five A M, officers from Wilkins Township observed the actor's vehicle and entered the traffic stop. The actor again engaged officers in a vehicle pursuit which eventually ended on Hoga Locust Street. Said that right, in Wilkins Township, where the actor fled on foot into his residence and barricaded himself inside. The Allegheny County Police SWAT team was dispatched, was dispatched to the team and following a lengthy standoff and negotiation, the actor peacefully surrendered to the police without furtherance incident. The chief and the department officer would like to personally congratulate those council members who were recently sworn into office in the council workshop reorganization meeting. Congratulations to Valerie Reifaller as president, Diane Law as vice president. Also, congratulations to Michelle McAndrews as borough manager and Ashley Brown as assistant manager. We are fortunate to have such an amazing and dedicated team assembled. They're, they work diligently to keep Churchill a premier place to call home. On behalf of the chief and myself, our most sincere best wishes for all, for a prosperous, healthy and safe new year ahead. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of December twenty-three are reported on a attached police department report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, motion to accept mayor's report for January twenty-fourth. Second.
Second.
Any discussion, comments?
I just wanna comment based on mayor's report. Uh, the level of automatic cooperation among our police departments in, in this whole region. This is a new, uh, organization, uh, cooperation among the police departments. I wanna really commend our chief for the way that he made us that happen.
Not for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, moving on to the treasurer's report and.
Finance.
Available. Making the world go round.
I would like to make a motion, Madam President, to accept the treasurer's report for December twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-three. Do you want me to read the account balances?
Uh, no, you can do the other motion of six and then the larger bills after that.
Sure, I would also like to make a motion directing the finance officers to fill the bills for the Borough Churchill accrued since December twelfth of twenty twenty-three. We will read the bills over five thousand, professional governmental underwriters, forty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Gateway, the December invoice of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. P two contracting for the locker room, twenty-two thousand, twenty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Figliotti Landscaping and Construction, Inc., fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirteen cents. Pashic M T R for the ADA Park Design, eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-four cents.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second?
Point of clarification that the motion does not include the, the actual reading of the bill amount.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll just, we do that, we'll do that after. The next time we can just read the bills and, uh, larger bills are in discussion. But that's fine, for the time. Any, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, bro.
I move to adopt resolution four, five, nine, four of the Borough Churchill, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, appointing Scott M. Stonebreaker as the property safety specialist for the Borough Churchill.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd even glad to have him aboard.
Yeah, yeah.
Knowing that he's already part of our, our, our volunteer fire department. You know, somebody's already invested in our community, so to have him actually as, as an employee for our community is, is really great news.
I'm really looking forward to all the positive changes that will come from this system. Um, and I'm sure residents are also looking forward to that as well, so thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without opposition.
Madam President, I move to approve the employment agreement established between Michelle McAndrew, our borough manager, and the Borough Churchill.
Second, any discussion?
Again, I would just point out that we are privileged to have such quality folks.
I'm looking forward to keep working with you. I'm excited, I'm excited to be president for you and bro. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Madam President, motion to adopt resolution four, five, nine, five at the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving adjusted twenty twenty-four salaries for the borough manager and assistant borough manager finance officer.
Second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, motion to adopt resolution four, five, nine, three of the Borough Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, establishing a standard mileage reimbursement rate of. Established by the. I R A, sixty cents, uh, established by the I R A. The I R A's rate for twenty twenty-four is sixty-seven cents per mile, driven for business use.
There a second? Second? Any discussion?
Only to say that this is the standard.
Yeah, yeah, this is something.
Rate and, and it's done everywhere.
Everywhere. Yep. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries without opposition.
Madam President, motion to accept year two of three agreement for the twenty twenty-four evacuation, which is pipe point repair of sanitary sewer and storm sewer lines with Soli Construction Incorporated. The contract price is for the second renewal period.
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without opposition.
Madam President, motion to accept year two of three agreement for twenty twenty-four manhole, manhole lining with Jet Jack Incorporated. The contract price is for the second renewal period.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, motion authorizing the borough manager to advertise for bid for video inspection of sanitary and storm sewer pipe segment. Filming closed circuit television, C C T V for sanitary and storm sewer line and pipe cleaning for twenty twenty-four.
Second.
That's getting hot.
Hey, I forgot in the chair.
Any discussion?
I would only say that this is along with the other three kinds of standard work that we do every year and so this contract evolves in line in year two and we have to do this every year. And so it's pretty, pretty standard for our, uh, for our public work.
Yeah, every, the first few meeting, the first meeting is a lot of this stuff of renewal, so. Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, I would, a motion permitting the, the borough tax collector to print and mail the twenty twenty-four Churchill Borough Real Estate tax bills.
Second. Any discussion? I know that Danielle is on. Mr. Mayor. Hi, Danielle.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, good.
If you wanna turn the camera on, but you don't have to, but if you would like to, we cannot see you.
I don't know how. Wait a minute, start video.
Wanna know.
Okay, there I am. Hello, hello.
Hi.
Um, when I was at the convention this last year for the tax collectors, there are quite a few across Pennsylvania that do the, uh, their own printing and, and mailing of the tax bills, and there's also, um, a lot that do their own, um, delinquent. East Pittsburgh is one that's local, and I'm working with Lisa Pitchford from White Oak for the printing of the bills. And I just think the borough can save some money. Um, I had a lot of questions, like, I'm not sure what our contract is with Jordan, if it's something that can be done this year or we'll have to wait until next year. So I just wanted to get borough's, um, feeling on the, on the whole process.
Yeah, any discussion on that? I mean, do you have questions, comments?
I have a few, if I can begin. Um, one, in terms of delinquent tax collector, I think it's always been a wise move to separate those out and one that's been pretty standard throughout, throughout the state. Um, and one that I don't think it's in our interest right now to, to consolidate that. Secondly, I think we have seen some challenges over, over the last year with regard to kind of billing and some other issues with the tax collector. Um, I don't know that the proper move right now is to introduce that burden to a current tax collector. When we have a system that, that seems to run effectively. In terms of both the printing of it, we've had some issues of things going out, you know, mistakes happen, I understand that, but I think for, for the benefit of our residents, you know, the idea of what is a short-term save and a long-term cost. I'd rather have an initial investment, you know, and, and find a better service to our residents in terms of where the billing has gone out. So on a very kind of direct level, you know, I would be opposed in, in the immediate future unless I saw some considerable change to either, you know, the direct kind of printing and distribution by the tax collector of the bills, we kind of talked about the way that it works, or the consolidation of, uh, the delinquent tax collector. So I think this is a question of, of, you know, making sure that we are providing the best service in the best way. And so we have our tax collector doing a good job of tax collection, we have a delinquent doing a good job of delinquency, and we have our printing working out. So I see no reason that we want to move in a direction of change.
Um, may I ask a question? I'm not aware of any issues with, um, that have come, no one has told me of any issues that have come up as far as the mailings. You had said at the beginning that there had been some issues.
I think, I think for clarity, I was trying not to get into specificity of, of the issues themselves. I think you and I in the matter council have had multiple discussions over some of the challenges that have taken place over, over your term. I don't think it's appropriate to have those conversations kind of in public in this way. I would simply say that, uh, in terms of what you, what the question you would ask about what was available, what the options and the feeling of council, I'm expressing to my fellow council people what my concerns are based on what I've observed over, over the last term. Um, so I don't think it's something that I want to necessarily go through each of the complications and letters that have gone out and then reissuing letters because they weren't properly gone. But I don't think that's something I wanna do, um, but I think that there, that there have been some complications and things that, that council, and this is directed towards, towards my, my fellow council members, um, that we would want to take in consideration in anything before.
Well, I'd like to sit down and, and discuss, you know, at least be made aware of what problems have arisen. I'm not aware of any, so.
Believe that not only have you been aware of those, you know, without going into the specificity of litigation, I believe that at certain point, you had looked to try and address those things at other venues, but don't think that the conversation that we're having right now is necessarily a document where that says anything more than there are challenges and incentives to make sure that my council.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, I do. It's very simple. I just asked, uh, our staff whether or not there had been any problems with the system that we're using now, and the answer was no. So I see no advantage to making this thing.
Okay, I was just, um, hoping to save the borough a few dollars.
I, I would make a point of clarification that the motion on the floor is, is in fact what, where the.
Correct, to permit, to permit, yes. Any other discussion? All in favor to permit?
Aye.
Aye. To permit?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Where are you off to?
What are you permitting?
The motion is to permit the, the tax collector to print in, in the, that we're.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
Yeah.
You're welcome. That's what's the permit.
Why don't we try to get to a server?
Yeah, let me remake the motion because the permit, I lost my thought in your permit space. Uh, I'm not used to being.
That's okay.
So mostly permitting the, the, uh, borough tax collector to print and mail the twenty twenty-four, uh, Churchill Borough Real Estate. Uh, tax bill is what's on the floor.
Yeah, what is on the floor, yeah.
You can recall it, I appreciate.
Recall that, please.
Well, so I think you just call for.
Yes, I recall it, you recall for the vote.
Okay, so.
So all in favor, will we to authorize the tax collector to print and mail?
Yes.
Correct. All in favor to allow the tax collector to print and mail the twenty twenty-four Churchill Borough Real Estate tax bill? All in favor for that? Aye. Opposed? No.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What I would say to Danielle Weaver is that, you know, although this vote did not go in the direction that she was hoping, I hope that she will continue to look for ways in which we can, uh, make the real estate tax bill process efficient and present, you know, maybe next season, um, another idea after a conversation is had with council about what was discussed this evening.
Thank you. Um, moving on fifteen, uh, Madam President, motion to, uh, reappoint Jordan Tax Services Churchill Borough's Delinquent Tax Collector. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without opposition.
Madam President, mo, uh, excuse me, Madam President, motion directing the borough manager to publish public notice that the thirty-day public comment period for pollutant reduction plans, which is B R P for the Sawmill Run Turtle Creek Watershed and the Thompson Run Watershed.
Second. Any discussion? Yeah. Yeah.
Sure, um, so the pollution reduction plan is part of your M S four permitting, uh, that you have in place currently. And, uh, the pollution reduction plan was prepared, it is required that it goes through a thirty-day public comment period and it's advertised as such. It will be on the agenda at next month's meeting. Uh, public would like to comment at that time. There's no requirement for, uh, special hearing or anything, but it will be on the agenda next month.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
And to clarify, the public comment needs to be submitted by, in writing, is that correct?
It can be in writing, or if they were to attend the meeting and provide any public comment at that meeting, they're, they're allowed to, similar to any other public comment on a, uh, item that's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, the next item, we could start with, uh, staff reports, Danny?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, we've gone over a number of items today for the sewer, uh, item. Um, the one thing that I would bring up and was included within your packet. Uh, at next month's meeting, we would anticipate having a proposed, um, sanitary sewer overflow elimination plan. And as for the M forty-seven sewer shed, the overflow is well downstream. It's in the shed where our pump station, uh, used to be. Um, there are still, uh, a little less than forty homes in Churchill that flow in that direction, so we are still tributary to an overflow. Uh, because of that, we are under a requirement of consent order to be part of the group that submits that overflow elimination plan. With that, there are a number of alternatives that are being chosen. That again is all within your packet, um, and I'd, I'd be happy to explain that further, uh, at next month's meeting. The, the committee, uh, run by three weather and the multi-munis, um, uh, municipal group has been reviewing the, uh, potential alternatives. Since there are only thirty-nine homes, we're left forty homes, Churchill, Churchill is a very small piece in this project that is anticipated to be a number of years down the road.
Thank you. Um, move on to the rest of staff. Ralph?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, under fire, fire company, we had thirty-seven calls last month, we're at five hundred and five for total for the year. Uh, the only significant call we had last month, luckily known, certainly had a car involved with, with twenty-five children on. Uh, none of the children were injured, flash driver we took up, and the guy that, uh, was in the accident angle took up himself. I just wanna give you a little statistic, shouldn't it not? In the last five years, fire calls, twenty nineteen, we had three hundred and seventy-five, twenty twenty, we had three hundred and sixty-nine. Twenty twenty-one, we had four hundred and twelve, twenty twenty-two, we had four hundred and ninety-nine, twenty twenty-three, we finished with five hundred and five calls. So it just keeps climbing every year, you know, it just keeps going up and up and up, so, uh, just so you're advised of that. Second thing I have on the public works, I just wanna make a public comment that when we have snow events, I'd like the people not to park on the streets because last Saturday, we, we had some difficulty getting around because there was a lot of cars parked on the street. I know it was a first snowstorm. Um, but we did have some difficulty getting around to some of the streets with the car department. And then we had some people calling the block, their street wasn't plowed, two hours into this storm. Just so everybody knows. The road department is out, we have, we start off, a free drive to start off with, and we do not leave until every street has been plowed and sold. We will hit your street, it may take it some time when we have a good snowstorm, uh, but we will get to everybody's street and get it plowed and cleaned off. Um, the other thing I'd like to do is thank council for hiring the, the new public citizen. I think it'll do us all well. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Um, I'd just like to thank council again, these upper commanders, excited to work with everyone in this upcoming year and work with the residents as well. Um, please take a look at the treasurer's report, so that would be finalizing, closing out of twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-four, yes, for, um, also, I have one copy laying around of the operating manual that I'll have in the operating guide in the binder. Um, I can print the free use as well, so everyone wants a hard copy. Um, it was a fun first week.
Ashley, anything? Oh, you can't hear you.
Friends, lady, thank you.
Chief, anything you'd like to say?
Uh, just, uh, very briefly, just, uh, a reminder, it's that time of year where we start to see, um, a, a lot of cars that are stolen because people leave them running in their driveways and, and eat club. Um, it becomes quite the, uh, the issue this time of year and, and as the cold weather, uh, comes into play, we'll start to see it more often. So just, uh, if you don't have a remote start, um, you don't have a way to monitor or be with the vehicle while it's running, you know, uh, just be mindful of that because every time this year, it becomes an issue. But that's it. Now, congratulations to Michelle and Ashley and to, um, and for Stonebreaker who are working with everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to Apple and your comment, or Calvin.
Yeah, curious, something.
Apple, any comments?
Anything? I would like to say thank you to Ralph's team. I was out on Saturday and going from borough to borough, I was making comments as a person I was in a car with how well our streets were taken care of, and you, you can tell nearly we loved Churchill. It was literally a line of snow. So I thank you so much, it's been the hard work. And if we thought there was, that people can't drive, and there were plenty of, uh, people spinning out, so, yeah.
I think we had six, yeah, six.
Yeah, I saw two of them.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there's a story to be told about that, about the streams if there's a.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, if you watch Dan's mom back in the day, they are, you know, the, the former, some of the former heads of, uh, wind duster, right, that's on our heat. And, and you guys know, they, they have to make the call as to whether or not to close the school or not, right? And so you look out on the street and when school's open, you're like. And the streets were a mess coming in from Pittsburgh, right, like, yeah, people lost their.
And the streets were a mess coming in from Pittsburgh, right? Like, yeah, people lost their minds. But our streets, right, clean as a whistle. So we, we have, you know, Ralph is always in, in the crew, is always taking care of things, and I know that people sometimes, they look out the window and they're like, where's the truck? If it is actively snowing, like it's coming down right now, don't think that's the moment that you need Ralph to come by. In fact, quite frankly, you might want to hopefully wait till make some of that snow stop, because if he, if he hits you early, when you're like, how come you haven't hit it yet? It's still snowing. Right? If you get six inches and he comes by for two, you're going to call back anyway for the next four, right? So just think it out, right? Think it through. They always get our streets to do a fantastic job. I appreciate it. Ralph and, and everybody else, uh, on our staff.
Yeah, please be patient.
Mayor, our, our manager.
Please be patient. Any other comments?
Um, I just want to remind everyone, um, if you have elderly neighbors or people who live alone, if you're having winter right now, check on them occasionally just to make sure they're okay. You know, nothing about. Because the weather's probably going to get colder before it gets nice.
True, neighbor.
Yeah.
Care about that.
Neighbor, yes, that's why we're at the neighborly community. There we are.
May you just have something that you want to say?
Well, on the police side, I want to welcome back Officer Anthony.
Oh.
So I'm today, he's in good shape, his arm, blue ladders, he was anxious to get back to work, get behind the wheel, uh, and get back to work, so welcome back, uh, Officer Anthony. And also just like to mention, our, our female locker room is occupied and full.
Thank you for that.
Any other comments from Council? Uh, I just would like to say that, uh, I, I appreciate very much the council's support of the new public safety position, and congratulations to Scott, Scott Stonebreaker, uh, and to Ralph and Michelle and the staff. And, uh, I think it's the, um, a, a, a great decision going down there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are we adjourning? I think we are.
Madam President, one, one more. And I can second it, because it got, it's that master of the.
Just a reminder, Danielle Salisbury is having an open house in our county chambers.
Yeah.
January tenth, seven thirty.
This Wednesday, this, this Wednesday, seven thirty to nine thirty.
Seven days.
Yeah.
So everyone's invited to come and.
She was going to be talking specifically about something, though, isn't she?
Constituent concern.
Oh, it was just. Okay. What did you say? What did you say?
He wants to know what, like, her residents need from the state record.
Open, open. Second, thank you. We have no, we have no motion to adjourn. Second.